Okay, all right, so now being 5:45, I'll call the May 8th meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectment Order. The first item on our agenda is executive session, so I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of number three, and that's to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or negotiating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I do. And this is Harry J. O'Hern III versus the Town of Plimpton Board of Health, U.S. District Court, see case number 122 CV 1161-FDS. So we've got a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, John, so we're now officially in executive session. All right. All right, we are now back after an executive session, and first item on our agenda is discussion with Board of Health representative regarding current well, transient non-community public water supply for townhouse, fire department, and police department. All right, take it away. Okay, we call this project number one, okay? Transient non-community public water supply for Five Palmer Road. Basically Liz and I met with DEP when they inquired as to why we were not a public water supply back in January of this year. I guess we had been on their radar, but then COVID gave us a couple more years. So in February Liz and I met with Scott Sayers from DEP, and he gave us a list of next steps after he had looked at our existing well. The existing well is a six-foot well from 1930-something that was tested in the 1990s. So there were five steps. We did four of them immediately and reported back the next day. The fifth step had to do with decommissioning the original water tank. There's a secondary water tank that we use now. And I worked with our plumbing inspector Doug, and that was done, and we were sent back to DEP. Then, for some reason, there were six weeks where we didn't hear anything from them. And we thought, well, maybe they got busy doing something else. Well, turns out that Town Properties had started talking with DEP, and DEP somehow got confused and forgot to talk to us. So I ended up speaking to Mr. McLaughlin, who's the bureau chief that I had talked with before, and let him know that it was a Board of Selectmen slash Board of Health project, and that he needed to resume speaking with us. And he did that. And immediately after, the next day, we received, Liz and I both received a letter that said that the DEP had determined that we would be a public water supply as we sit here now with our well and the buildings that we have. And they gave us some next steps to do. One was simple, which was fill out a registration form to register a new public water supply. And the second one was to hire a certified public water supply operator. After looking to see who the public water supply operator was for some of the public water supplies in town, we have many. It turned out that there was a women-owned group that presently is the operator for the Dennet School and for the Plimpton Plaza. And when I called that company, they're called Sarian. They said that, yes, they worked on small public water supply systems, which is what we are, and they would be happy to begin speaking with us. So we gave them basically a list of what had gone on, and then came and met with me, and I took them around to all the different little buildings. And they said, yeah, we would be able to help you to get the well that you're on now to become a public water supply. DEP could have gone too late. They could have taken us to court and got a consent decree because we are out of compliance. Instead, they decided to take what I consider to be the nicer step because we're willing to work with them, that they would not take legal action and just keep giving us steps, and we just keep meeting them. And as long as we're showing forward progress, that's as far as it goes. So before you tonight is the contract to sign with Sarian Company to become the public water supply operator for the well in the basement. There is a deadline of May 18th for next steps to be completed. The next steps, there are five of them, can all be completed by the public water supply operator once the contract is in place. So I have, I think that May 18th, we will be able to meet that deadline. So that's project number one. Project number two... All right, can we ask questions on this one first? You can ask questions on this one. So once these five things are completed by Sarian, we will be a public water supply, our well here? Okay, all right. And we will be in full compliance with the Drinking Water Act and DEP? Awesome.
And Town Administrator has indicated that she's reviewed the contract too and feels comfortable with it.
Yeah, I read it too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is there any reason we shouldn't approve this?
I don't think there's any reason in this day and age that the Town of Plimpton has any excuse as to why they shouldn't be compliant with the Drinking Water Act. So the fees that they're charging, where's that money all going to come from, do you know? That's a Liz problem. Okay, so it's not Board of Health? It's not in your budget? It must be in maybe town buildings maintenance or something like that?
I assume so.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's difficult to nail down the fees exactly because basically they have to test for everything. And then depending on what they find, some things may need to be retested, and then DEP will come up with a schedule for testing. And again, depending on what they find, so there's no way of knowing exactly. Yeah, it looked pretty open-ended when... The only thing that was sacked was their hourly rate. Everything else was, depends on what they find.
Sure.
Yeah. And that is typical.
Do you want to take a vote on that now?
Yeah, I think we're ready to sign the document with Sarian. All right, I'll make a motion, the selectmen sign the contract with, but they need to change this because we're not the select board, we're the Board of Selectmen, with Sarian Company. This will be effective immediately, and the contract will go until March 31st, 2024, and they'll provide the services that we've been discussing to get us compliant with a public water supply. Do we have a second?
There was a motion, so second.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so I'll... Do you want to still sign that page and then... I'm gonna write, "Plimpton Board of Selectmen." Because that is our legal title. And signed by, okay, so signed by, it looks like me, and then Sarian. Today is May 8th. On this eighth day. Okay, perfect, so that's all set, Bree? All right, awesome, okay. Any more questions on project one?
No.
Okay, project two. Project two! In discussion with DEP, it was their general opinion at the time that this well would not be sufficient going forward, and that we would have to look into a new well. Not only because we don't want to limit the hours, amount of people, and things that we do in our existing buildings, but because there was some talk of putting yet another building, you know, here. So it may be that the well down there is great, but I think we have found, just going along, that it really, it doesn't have enough flow to serve all the buildings we have without running into problems. And so the next steps for project number two would be to have a survey done by a surveyor of all of our properties. The second thing would be to hire a small water supply engineer, which Sarian has a couple of people that they would recommend. And they would come in and they would ask us about our existing buildings. They would ask us about what we have planned for the future. Couple of the small things, the library. DEP is of the opinion that the library on its own could be a public water supply, and we're not running two of them. So we'll have to ask the engineer to factor in connecting the library back to well number two when we get it. The library right now has an undocumented well behind the building that nobody knows anything about. And if you've ever been in the bathroom there, you know it's not a good well. So I think it is safe to say, and I would hope you would all agree, that we're not going to run two public water supply systems with two operators. And so the library is going to have to be in the mix. The other thing is the highway department has an undocumented well that nobody knows anything about. So it might be worthwhile when we speak to the engineer, whoever ends up speaking to them, that you throw that in the mix. What you don't want to do is you don't want to limit the town's growth. And you don't want to say, "We can't be open on Fridays because we don't have the capacity in our public water supply," or "We can't hire any more employees," or "We can't work extra hours," or, you know, I mean, we have to be looking towards the future. And the future is a brand-new well.
I don't disagree. In fact, I think the Town Properties Committee has been moving forward as part of their feasibility study to look at the siting of a new well, realizing that the permitting is obviously the Board of Health's purview. And I think we're looking in terms of a well that potentially could survive, do the whole campus, if you will. And the campus being the library, the fire, the police.
With all due respect, I would like to make sure that whoever is in charge of doing well number two is looking at it through the lens of what is best for the Town of Plimpton, existing buildings first, and not looking at it through the lens of Town Properties, who I assume your project is the new fire station.
Well, Town Properties is responsible, and in fact, we voted to make it the agent for the Board of Selectmen to look at all properties owned by the town, not just the fire station. So yes, we want to look at everything, and we want to make sure that whatever we recommend comes before yourselves. Obviously, we've got a partnership here to make sure that we do the right thing.
The Town Properties reports to the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Yes, as the agent of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I think that I understand that in the past, the Board of Selectmen gave Town Properties the go-ahead to make some of these decisions. Well, they are our agent, so they would be able to. I think what we need clarification on is there's no doubt that Board of Health has the jurisdiction over the existing well. But I don't know if it's with siting the new well, whose jurisdiction is that? Is that with the DEP?
Well, the siting, the recommendation for where a siting might take place is with the Board of Selectmen, and we've made the Town Properties Committee the agent. As far, it would have to go through the DEP, obviously. I mean, they could come in and say, "Nope, doesn't work," you know? And then we're back to square one, and we go look for another site. But I think we, what we want to do is try to find a site that works for the existing campus and the potential for a new building if that was to take place.
Well, I think I would have to add that in my discussions with DEP, they work with Boards of Health on this issue. About siting, because it's a public water supply? Okay, all right.
But the siting does rest with the Board of Selectmen legally.
The siting rests with, the engineer makes a determination as to where he thinks one, two, three locations can be, and the DEP makes the decision. I know that little, the Peter person that came in said that he made that decision when we met in my office. But I did go back to the bureau chief, and I asked him if that was accurate, and he said it was not. So it is the DEP that makes the decision.
Right, but they don't come in and say, "Well, put it there." They look for the Board of Selectmen.
No, they look for the Board of Health.
In the case of the siting, I believe it's the Board of Selectmen, and I've asked Town Administrator to go back and legally confirm that.
Well, I've talked to the bureau chief, and he said that they work with Boards of Health.
Fine, but...
So again, Liz and I are working together on this project, so we've got it all covered. Well, we're all, I think we're all on the same page.
Well, we're not.
I mean, we're on the same team, how about that? We're all on the same team.
I would hope so, I'd like to think of that. One of the concerns I have is that, as we look at the siting, that when we have looked at it from the Town Properties Committee, we did some sensitivity with some of the different committees, and especially Recreation and PAYS. What if the ball fields had to be the site? And the feedback we got was, "We would love to keep these ball fields where they are right now." So we said, "Fine," as we tried to think about siting, "Let's see if there's areas that would incorporate what we have without touching on the ball fields." And we know that when the DEP comes in and says, "Okay, you have a site for a well, you're going to need this much around it in terms of depth to protect the water."
Well, that's a simplistic way to explain it. There are many, many setbacks that are required to a public water supply, including the location of any generator. And we have one at the police station. We have, we're going to have another one over here. Those can't be within X amount of room. Any type of water, you know, wetlands or anything like that. There are many, many setbacks that go into it. And that's why it is important for the Board of Selectmen slash Board of Health to get an engineer, give the engineer all the information from all the different committees, not just Board of Health and Board of Selectmen, but from Town Properties, from building, from Recreation. And then the engineer will give us two or three locations. And then DEP will look at the locations, and they will thumbs up, thumbs down on which ones that they will approve. But I think that definitely, this is a huge project. It's going to cost a lot of money. It's probably going to have to go up for sealed bids because it's going to be that big, the whole thing, maybe. It's very important for the Board of Selectmen to make sure that the townspeople in all the departments get their say.
So when you describe, though, the engineer coming in, offering choices, DEP saying, "These are okay or not," where in that process does any planning or future planning that we're thinking about, when does that input, where and when does that input come in with the engineer and DEP?
Well, the location of the well trumps the location of any new buildings.
But won't those agencies, the engineer, the DEP, I mean, won't they take into account the uses that we're intending for all of this? They will take that in.
If you tell them, yeah.
And so somewhere in that process, there will need to be that input that hopefully is from planning and...
We told them at the first meeting that there was another building, as I said earlier, another building being planned for this piece of property. Okay. I mean, if it was a question of you didn't have enough room for one or the other, the well would win, but I think there's enough room for this. For everything? Awesome.
I do too.
Brett?
Yeah, if I may, so I think to your question, when the engineer looks at the site, the first step is not necessarily where you put a well. It's where you can't put a well, right? So you have, you have all these rules for setbacks, and so that takes out chunks of your property. And once you have those chunks out, you're going to have an area where it could potentially fall. That's when you want to look at, "What's our future use of the property? What do we want to do in certain areas?" "Okay, maybe we eliminate some of the acceptable areas." You know, "What do we know about the groundwater? If we're going to have to drill through ledge to 200 feet in this area, and we could go 50 feet through sand here, maybe cost-wise, we want to look at this site versus that site." So I think that's all stuff that we're going to take, or the town boards and commissions need to take into account after we figure out where it can't go. So then we kind of dial in where it can go, and then maybe cost-wise, where it's best to go.
And they do drill test wells? Okay. So we can see what's under there. Will this current well be retired once we have a new well or decommissioned? I talked to Sarian about that, and they actually had some really good suggestions. They said rather than just retire this well and the well behind the library, reuse them. You could have the fire department, give them the library well for filling up the tankers. Or you could use this well for watering the grounds, you know, irrigation well. Neither one of those activities require potable water. Gotcha.
One thought we had was maybe to take the library well, if it was freed up, to use for irrigation for the ball fields.
Either one.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would like to ensure, I think we're on the same page, but I want to make sure that Town Properties and Board of Health and Selectmen work this as a team.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a Board of Health, Board of Selectmen slash Board of Health project. And I know, you know I do. And I think that Town Properties, you know, is the same as building and the ball fields, and everybody gets a say, and everybody gets to know what's going on. But your project that you're working on, your new police station, I mean, excuse me, fire station project is a parallel project from this, and we have to keep them separate.
Yeah, but you keep saying the fire station is the Town Properties project. It is, but it's much bigger than that. We are looking beyond just a fire station. Fire station may not get built, may financially be impossible. We're not there yet.
But you're paying P3 with the money that you got to do a study for the new fire station. So that's why I, in my head, that's a separate project.
Maybe I could ask Mr. Wilson, since he's the Town Property Chair, to...
So I think a couple things here. I think everything that Kathy has said, I certainly agree with as far as the process. We can't, from the fire station piece of it, we can't even begin to say what the fire station is going to cost, what we need to do next, until we sort out the issue of the well. Because that dictates a lot here. So that's sort of one major step that needs to happen. The well that's down there now, if something breaks on that, we have a huge problem because we're not going to be able to get it out. If you go down there and take a look at it, there's a hatch in the roof of that room, and that's how they're able to pull the well up and down. If you look at where that hatch is now, we poured a concrete ramp over it. So that will have to come out if something happens to the well. So I really hope we're able to put a new well in, and that one just keeps humming along until it doesn't. But hopefully, that's after we have a new well. And so, you know, we do a lot of thinking here. And again, Town Properties is not about a fire station. That's one of many things that we're working on and have to think about and look at, including what we're doing with these buildings. Now, as part of that process, in trying to figure out where do we put a well, what needs to go into that, how do we get that put in? Is that a cost associated with the fire station project, or is it a separate cost? We think it's separate, and we think it's something that should be moved on sooner rather than later, probably utilizing ARPA funds for that so that we can get that sorted. There's a fair amount of work that's going to have to happen. As far as where it can go on the property, we're pretty limited. We've got lots of things that require setbacks all over the property, as Kathy said, generators, other areas of use. The ball fields are used. You can't use part of the ball field. Say, "Well, the outfield is part of that, you can't do that." I think that it might be helpful if I reach out to Dan Pallotta and see if he and Peter Dillon can come into a future Selectmen's meeting so that we can talk about the work that they have done and where they were going with that. Because that was sort of the process that we were already going through. And we already did do a survey, Grady did, of the existing property, what's where and where things are as part of this process to be able to go to DEP, suggest some site locations, do test wells, follow the whole process.
I agree with John that you can't move forward on your project until the new well gets sited. Personally, I'd say you just stop working on your project until the new well is sited.
Is there any sense of how long that's going to take? I mean, just getting a surveyor now may take months.
We already, we already did the survey. I mean, we have a survey done by Grady, and that's done already. I mean, that's part of the thing that I'm sort of understanding here. We were going down this path until, you know, we were asked to stop. We stopped, and we haven't been able to engage. And as far as dealing with DEP, the only interactions we had with DEP were with the Department of DEP that does permitting for new wells. Town Properties and any of our representatives have got nothing to do with the old well or any of those discussions. So we were down the path, we were going to have a meeting in early April to have initial discussions with DEP and start talking about siting so that we could move things along and get that process moving so that we could do test wells.
It's a logical progression. We had to deal with the existing well first. And then, you know, once that was set, then we could deal with well number two. But again, John's point is very important. He cannot do any more work on his, on Town Properties' new fire station until we know where the well is going to be. But...
That's, we have other work we can do.
Yes, yes, planning.
But we cannot come to town meeting, which is why we're not coming to town meeting, and suggest moving forward with the project that we don't have a full understanding of the cost, which is what I said last year when we came to town meeting, that when we come next time, we will have a full accounting of what the cost would be. But there is other work we can do, and we certainly are not going to be in a position to move forward and request funds until we have all of that sorted.
Right, and it was my understanding with the bidding process that, you know, this needs to go through the Board of Selectmen. And... For the well? For, probably for the biggest portion of the new well, it's going to require that. And I guess the part that I'm not clear of is why is P2, or P3, or whoever they are... And I guess the part that I'm not clear of is why is P2, or P3, or whoever they are, why are they involved? And you say that they've done a survey, but the DEP asked us specifically, that's one of the next steps they want us to do, is do a survey. And when they, when we get closer to it, then we need to ask them, you know, would you accept this survey that's already been done? But you have to go through the correct steps, you have to do what DEP tells you to do, and DEP is going through the Board of Selectmen slash Board of Health.
So does DEP know that we did a survey, whether it's what they want or not?
Go ahead.
We didn't actually know there was a survey done as the Board of Health till, when did you send that to me, John, last week? Yeah, two, three days ago?
We were moving along with this without a problem.
Yeah.
And now we're not. So, you know, I think it would be helpful to have Dan and Peter come in, be able to speak to what their thinking was and their credentials.
Peter is Peter.
Peter Dillon.
He's a geologist with them.
He what?
He's a geologist.
Okay.
What's, what's his position?
He is a geologist.
He's done, he's permitted numerous public water supplies.
Yeah, he has a long list of towns that he's worked with. He also works with Tetra Tech, which is one of the largest engineering companies in the world.
On the Board of Health and Norwalk, and he's also their water supervisor.
Well, why don't we try to set up a meeting, a joint meeting? Bring Peter in, and maybe we can bring in the DEP as well, and find out, make sure that we're, we're on the right path here, because we all agree that we need a new well, and nothing's going to happen until then.
Right.
But you've got some background work that you're doing at the same time, but it doesn't take away from the fact that the well is job one.
Right, and they have to permit.
Right, they permit it, right.
So they have their whole process for that.
Right, exactly, exactly. Okay.
So I guess then just...
This isn't pie in the sky, but I mean, obviously, we need as much communication between each of these entities, and I, we, I don't think we can go wrong having meetings and communicating. I suppose we can go wrong, but to the degree that we can just all share this, I think that'll be helpful.
That's true, but I don't think that we can all agree right now that P3 and their people are the ones that this town wants to go forward with the project. I mean, there are many other people who do this work, and I think it only makes sense that even if we don't have to put it out to bid because it's too small of an amount, best businesses practices will show that if you're looking for somebody to do this, you ask two or three different people to come in and tell you what it is that they could do for the town. I don't like the fact that, I'm not comfortable, I guess, with the fact that it's just automatically this Mr. Dillon.
I'm a little lost. P3 are the consultants that we use for the police department. Okay. We had a contract with them. The contract was still in force, because originally, the contract was that we were looking at a public safety building, not a police department building. We, my understanding, and John, you can correct me, you were part of the committee, but my understanding is we pulled back from looking at a public safety building because we couldn't get the fire department cost to come into anything that was reasonable. But we needed the police department, and anybody who remembers it down the hall will agree to that. So these people are not people we don't know, and we do have a contract with them.
But is the contract for all these buildings you're talking about, or is the contract for a public water supply? Because I don't think that was mentioned.
No, it's for the looking at, well, John, you can...
It's, I mean, the whole process of sighting the well and understanding where that goes and that it's viable, which is, so that's the sighting and the test wells, is part of what we need to do to be able to lock down what we can recommend for a fire station.
Yeah, I guess that's what I, I guess that's what I disagree with.
Well, I don't, but the, the other part of that is that, you know, you have that piece, and then to the extent that we're going to go and install the well, that is a separate project, right? That is not something that P3 would be dealing with. You would then need to have a project to, because it's going to require tree clearing, it's going to require, you know, access for that, you just need to get the test wells in, and then, of course, there's going to be a lot of digging, because we're going to have to get, because the only place you can really put a well is out here, that you've got space far enough away. And you're going to have to bring the water back in here, you're going to have to put a water treatment system in this building, and then you're going to have to get the water from this building back out again. And police station is the only one that has a decent, you know, newer water supply going out to it. Fire station, we likely need to run new ones out there, which is fine, because we got to run the library anyways. And then if we have to go down the hill, that's a whole other thing, but we can put that one to, for thinking about later. But, I mean, there's, there's a lot of work involved with that. And then in addition to that, if we're digging things up around here, maybe we also need to deal with things like wires that are running every which way. And so we need to come up with a plan, getting the well in, getting water here, that at least sorts out the buildings that are existing on there, and then you need a plan of what to do with the whole space in order to make sure that we're not doing things two times or three times over. But the first piece of this is related to the work that P3 is doing, which is well sighting, and then that's a whole separate project from, as far as getting the well in, getting water treatment in, getting water to all the different buildings that need it, all multi-spaces of that.
I guess, I guess then that's the, the question maybe is, is the well sighting in the scope of P3's work? Maybe that's, that's the question, I think, that we're looking for answers for.
It is, because we can't, you know, putting public water supply aside, you know, let's say the public water supply we have here was absolutely perfect for everything we need. Knowing that we were adding another building and that adding the police station, that we were close to sort of at capacity, that was always going to be something that we were going to need a well. Was it just going to be a well for the fire station, or is it going to be a well for the, for the whole property? We don't want to have multiple public water supplies, multiple treatment systems for that, and multiple testing. That's the other issue, is that if you have more than one space where you're bringing the water and treating it, now you're going to have to test in multiple spaces, and that's going to cost additional money. So we've always viewed that very much in scope, as far as part of the process in evaluating and recommending what to do about the fire station.
Go ahead, Brad.
So just a question on that. So P, is P3 our OPM?
Yeah.
So they're our owner's project manager for the stuff that we're doing, the planning and the buildings.
For the planning part, yeah.
Okay. But then they, so if that's the role they play, then they wouldn't, design work wouldn't be in the scope of their realm, because they'd be our rep overseeing what design work was done, right?
We're not building yet, so they're not, we're not, they're our consultant right now to help us get through design, and then at the point that we build, then they may, then they would be our OPM.
So they, I, that, that almost creates a conflict, right? If they're doing the design, but they're also, are the owner's rep overseeing the design?
They're a consultant to help us through the design process. We have an architect that's doing the design. They're not drawing up the plans.
Right.
They're trying to make sure that the architect delivers what they're supposed to deliver to us, and that, I mean, that we're taken care of in this whole process, that we get the information we need from the people that we needed from, that's their role.
Sure.
They don't work for the architect in any way.
They work for us.
They work for us.
Right, so in that same regard, they wouldn't be doing the civil engineering to try and locate wells, right? They would, that would get hired out to a design firm, an engineering firm.
Correct, well, that's what, that's what Peter Dillon was, was working on, in order to, that's why they, they went and hired and did the survey, which is, which is from Grady, in order to, to show what we have and where things are. And then, that's where we're working with Peter to help try and site a well and work with DEP through the process to make sure that DEP is comfortable in their permitting of such law.
Okay, so then Peter would be the civil engineer that we've retained to do that through our OPM?
Correct.
Do we have a contract with Peter?
I believe he's worked something out. I don't know what he's done specifically with, with respect to P3, but that's why we can bring Dan and Peter in to talk through it.
Sure. I think whoever, if, if there's, I guess if there's already a civil engineer that's selected, that we've retained as a town to do this, then that's the person that, that should be coming to the Board of Health for us to look at this with. And I know we already have the existing site conditions that Grady did, so having that along with this civil engineer, look at that, would probably be the, the logical next step in my mind.
I know Peter would be happy to come in.
We should have Rebecca Ducham, she's the civil engineer for P3, come, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think she would be our, the eyes for the town on the civil engineering side.
Yeah.
So do you want to do that offline, or do you want us all to get together within the next couple of weeks and talk about it all together?
I, I, I mean, do you, do you think we need to come back to the Select Board to address it, or do you want to, do you want me to have Kathy schedule a meeting with all the parties and sit down and work on it?
If you can give me a couple dates, then I can reach out to...
Does that work for you?
To Dan and ask them to see if they can...
I would attend, too, because I'm on the Town Properties Committee as a representative of the Selectmen.
Okay.
All right, yeah, that sounds good, then. All right, so you guys all, will meet at some point in the near future and make sure...
We just have to be super careful that we know what project we're talking about when we're meeting. And again, I understand the whole, well, while we're at it, let's do this, this, and this, but that has absolutely nothing to do with the town of Plumpton versus the DEP.
No, I think your focus will just be project two, the well site.
Yeah, our, our only involvement that, that we want to make sure is done correctly is, is the sighting of the well.
Yeah.
The rest of it is whatever you guys decide on.
Perfect, all right, that sounds great. Very good. All right, so we'd already taken care of the second item on the agenda, and that was our contract with Sarian, which we signed, and then it looks like, Kathy, do you feel like we did the new well, too? That we've got that one squared away as well? That was the third one, that was proposed new well, public water supply.
I think that's what we just discussed.
Yeah, I think that's what we just discussed.
That is what we just...
Project two, perfect, all right. So it looks like we've gotten all three of those taken care of. Any more questions or concerns?
So just, we're okay in what we're proceeding with as the next step?
Yeah, that John and P3 and...
I'll reach out to...
Yeah, we're going to meet with the Board of Health.
And Peter.
Okay.
We've got a date that, that works for them, and let's all get together and talk this through so we can see what we, where we proceed, what else, who else we need to hire, so on and so forth.
Perfect, great, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you guys for coming in, and so, yeah, just, I'm Shitwinkleback from you, that was our liaison.
Be right there.
All right, very good. All right, well, thank you guys so much for coming in, really appreciate it. All right, so regional agreement and next steps.
What's that about?
That's me.
Okay.
So I think I've mentioned this before to the board, or at least some of you individually, we have to make some amendments to the regional agreement, with Silver Lake Regional Agreement. The most pressing issue on that, yeah, well, let me take a step back. We have some things that we've been doing with Silver Lake that have been to a benefit for our K-6 and, and pre, and pre-K, too. And the way that we've been doing that is we've sort of been treating it, to some extent, as if we're one big region, and we're not. So the region, of course, is seven through 12, or seven, seven through 12 plus, right? So we have the pre-K program that's run out of Kingston, the integrated preschool, and that is a shared service, really, if you think about it, for the three towns. It's not in the regional agreement. It needs to be. And so we are going to need to have a special town meeting in the fall, each of the towns is going to, to be able to make the amendments to the agreement, and oh, we haven't touched the agreement in 35-plus years, so there's going to be a bunch of other changes that are going to go into that, but nothing that really fundamentally affects what's happening in the region. The pre-K piece really is just documenting legally what we've been doing all this time. And, and so the other issue that we have, which will not be sorted by this fall, is that we have in-district special ed programs. So, so out, so you have what happens in the Denet, we have a special ed program, but we also have an in-district program that's sort of a step between what happens at Denet versus what happens with a placement outside of the district. Those, those programs are currently administered, or currently run out of Kingston, so it's the, and it's Plumpton, Halifax, and Kingston children that attend. The added benefit of those programs, of course, is that the students get to be part of what will be the Silver Lake community later on, and they're not fully out of district, and so the kids are at least within the neighboring towns. Those programs have also been run like the pre-K. Silver Lake is not authorized to do anything other than seven through 12. When we do the agreement this fall, it will be pre-K and seven to 12. The only way that they could do K through six is if we regionalize the entire district, which is not something that the school committee, that is, the public school committee is in favor of. But we have some other ways to work through that and some other agreements that we can do, and we're going to be working on, or they're going to be working on that this summer. So the first step that we're, we have to deal with this fall is approving the agreement for pre-K and any of the amendments in order to keep our friends at DUCI happy, because they didn't realize that we didn't, that this was being done in this way, and we're trying to, they're kind of like our friends at DEP, we've got to keep them happy. So that's what we'll have to do this fall, and we can talk more about that as we get closer to it.
So what do we have to do right now? Is there anything that you need from us beyond...
Just understand that we're going to have to have...
Okay, that you're going to be working towards this? Okay.
Yep, sort of, it's the heads up, and there'll be, I think, I think there'll be some additional communication that will come out from, from the district about this.
Okay.
So once that comes along, we'll make sure you guys get it.
Yeah, this was quite a while ago. You and I were on that call, and I think Jason may have been on the call, too, and they wanted to gauge our interest in regionalizing the whole thing, and we were like, not interested.
Something about handing over more than half of our town's budget...
Yes.
...to the district as a whole is probably not ideal.
Wasn't, yeah, a winner for us, but I mean, this is obvious, we need to take care of this.
This one, business as usual, cleans up the...
Cut and dry, we're doing it already, we just, it needs to be in the agreement.
And, and, and we will see, as part of the budgets for next year, we're going to see some money move around. So there's things that we're paying for, Silver Lake is paying for, that really we should be paying for as a shared cost, and some vice versa stuff, too. So like our, our, our staff that does the school lunches, Denet, they're technically, Denet is a satellite cafeteria of Silver Lake, so they're not on our budget. So they will have to move over to our budget, and that will drop off of the Silver Lake budget. So there's going to be some, quite a bit of movement around as we get into the next budget cycle to try and clean up this, and we have probably 10 to 15 folks that aren't quite right as far as how the shared costs are going, and so we'll, that's all going to have to get kind of tidied up.
But this is the easy part.
This is the easy part, and I think even the tidying up the shared costs will be fine, just to be, have some explanation. And then the next part that has to be worked on is figuring out K to six.
All right, so thank you, John. More to come. All right, next item, old townhouse roof project. We need to award the contract to K&amp;J Remodeling, K&amp;G Remodeling, for $134,250. And this was, I believe, recommended by the, we got a letter from somebody recommending...
From, from the architect.
Habee?
Habee.
This is, they were the lowest of the...
Yeah, the lowest bidder.
Yeah.
Will match the, the criteria.
Yes.
And it includes all the alternates with that as well. And the good news here is that we put that placeholder on the warrant, and that's going to be significantly less than what we needed, because we have money left over from the, from the article from last town meeting, and so this will be, the bids came in pretty good for a change.
Nice. And how quickly would these guys be able to start working?
I'm not quite sure of that, of the timeframe that they put in there, but my guess is that this will get going in relative, relatively short order.
Okay, and this is the roof replacement for the Plumpton Historic Society Building. I believe this covered the fascia and gutters and...
Yeah, this is, it's much more, it's more, it's more than shingles. We're talking about fascias and gutters, and the existing gutters are literally nailed into the roof, like on top of the shingles. So we're going to get all of that taken off, all that cleaned up. So, we're going to get all of that taken off, all that cleaned up. It will have full removal of the insulation in the attic space. All of it will come out. Fresh insulation will be put in when everything is dry because they all got wet up there, and that will hold a lot of moisture and mold. Includes cleaning up all the plaster and repairing any of that, repainting. So, when the building is, is done, it will, it will look probably better than, better than it did before the incident of the water coming down.
Very good.
I think they're even going to deal with the chimney. If they have to repoint it, and put a cap on it, there's a decap right now. So, water's coming down in that. So, it's, they're pretty very detailed in, in what's part of the scope of the project.
Great. All right. Any questions for John?
No questions.
Thomas? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we award the contract to K&amp;J, K&amp;G Remodeling for the Plimpton Historic Society Townhouse, how, Townhouse Roof Replacement. What? The Old Town House? The Old Town House, okay. So, a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Next item is solar projects. This is to execute a revised notice of exercise Upland Road Solar pilot approval that's pending town meeting approval, and it's Upland Road Solar. Do you want to do these one at a time, Wendy? Because then we've got execute legal fee agreement Ring Road Solar.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll turn things over to you.
Okay. So, the first one that you decide is the, so it's 61 Upland Road, which is Crescent Moon Cranberry. And they revised their plan for 65 acres to be remunerated solar. And the non-exercise that was voted on didn't, it wasn't addressed to the landowner, and it included all of the land, not partial. So, Matt Thomas revised it. We also didn't have the original. It, it just got lost. So, this was a good opportunity to make sure that it's matching the notice of the letter of intent for the chapter removal per the site plan.
Is that the only change?
That's the only change.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we're not actually signing anything, right? We're not signing until after town meeting?
No, you are going to sign the non-exercise.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this was just that we're not, we are not interested in purchasing the property?
Correct.
Again?
Yes.
People already set one time?
Right.
So, it's just reaffirming?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. All right, do we have something to sign?
Okay. We're going to do two originals, so we'll have one here.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion. Any questions or concerns before we do this? We already go with this.
No.
One time. All right. That the Town of Plimpton notify Crescent Moon Cranberry that we are not exercising our right of first refusal on the properties located at the site. Is that sufficient?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we all need to sign these.
Actually, I'm just going to change this. We have the clerk and vice chair mixed up.
It is, yeah.
So, this is actually a revised non-exercise.
Because it's taken out the 16.3...
Wait, it's revised.
Okay, well, sign the revised. All right, friendly amendment to sign the revised notice of non, that we're not exercising our right of first refusal on this because it takes the land that's in the solar project out of the equation.
This was originally 24 acres, as I remember?
I, I think it might have been around 20 or, or so. And then, it got scaled down.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark did the second on that. So, this is the eighth day of May.
That's one.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so next one is the Ring Road Solar, Wendy?
So, the Ring Road Solar is just a solar fee agreement. We've received the funds. We now get retainers from the solar developers. We started that during COVID. So, we've received the money, and we have a legal fee agreement that KP did a while ago. So, it's just a matter of the chair assigning it, and then we send it back to them.
We, these definitely have enough money in them to cover any...
And if they're short per the agreement, we, we go back.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion that the Selectmen sign the memorandum of agreement between Town of Plimpton and Ring Road Solar for $5,000 in legal expenses to be covered by the Greenback Capital, who's the developer.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That one's all set. Okay. All right, anything else for us, Wendy?
I do want to mention that I have the Upland Road Solar project. The solar pilot is pretty much negotiated. It's going to be voted on at town meeting. I have a copy for board review. There's only one change in it. I won't talk about it here, but I would like you to review it. It's the same template that's been signed by the other two projects. But where the Upland Road Solar project is a little different due to some of the, you know, arrangements and agreements we've had, there is one change, so I would like you to review that.
Would you email it to us?
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
That's what you sent us today?
Yeah. So, there's no signatures or anything like that, but we want to make sure that this is the execution copy that's going to be held in the clerk's office that the town's going to vote on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Wendy, very much.
All right.
All right. So, next item on the agenda is, we've got some appointments. And we've got Conservation, an interim administrative assistant, and an election worker. So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Timothy Ferraro as Conservation Commission, May 8th, 2023, to June 30th, 2025. Christine Kelly is the interim administrative assistant, May 8th, 2023, until dissolved. And Geraldine Salini as an election worker, May 8th, 2023, until dissolved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have, great, thanks, Bree.
I just, I might mention the Tim Ferraro letter to us is really excellent. And it sounds like he's going to be a wonderful addition to the ConCon. Glad to have him.
And I believe that the town clerk is still looking for election workers to count ballots election night. So, if anybody's interested, you may want to let her know. I don't know what it pays. It's, it's a paid position, right?
It's a paid position.
Okay.
Yes, I don't know.
And you just count ballots? All right. Very good. All right, warrants paid.
Yes. Could you sign something? That was the solar one that Mark had said. That's got the signature from the other party in it?
Oh, sure.
Yes, and warrants paid at $25,015.85.
Okay, there you go, Bree. All right, thank you. All right. Correspondence, Eversource gas connection request?
Yes. And we have Eversource, we have a few. So, we have one for 10 Palmer Road, and on Highway has approved all of these.
Okay.
So, we have 10 Palmer Road, 28 Buttonwood Drive, 15 Deborah Sampson Way, and 58 Main Street.
And these are...
All gas.
All gas? And it's new installations?
I don't know if they have to tell me if they do work. This is a gas main service. 158 Main, this is a gas and an end cap. They do require road cuts, so Robbie, I go to him first.
Okay.
We have him do them. 28 Buttonwood was another end cap, gas main end cap. 10 Palmer, and that was another end cap.
Okay, so it's 10 Palmer, 15 Deborah Sampson, 28 Buttonwood, and 58 Main Street?
Did you get 15 Deborah Sampson? Sorry.
Yeah, 15 Deborah Sampson.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen authorize Eversource to do road cuts in, with gas connection installations or, or work at 10 Palmer Road, 15 Deborah Sampson, 28 Buttonwood, and 58 Main Street.
Yes.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes 4:24. Any questions or concerns?
Not I.
All right. I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from 4:24 as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next meeting is town meeting. Holy cow. And I think we're posted for like 6 o'clock?
6:30.
6:30 for any business that may happen to require our attention. And then, our next meeting after that will be 5:22. All right. Who'd like to go first on rates?
Well, is there anything from the floor? No? Okay. I have a rave somewhere here.
Just one?
Just one.
Ooh.
Well, it covers a lot.
You never just have one.
Yeah. I was thinking of a rave, and you know, I was riding around town, and I was thinking, how nice, how pretty the town looks with the trees coming out, flowers coming out, the townwide cleanup that we had. So, it just feels like a great time, and the hummingbirds are back, so.
Are they?
Yeah. The world is good.
Get your feeders out.
Yes.
All right.
That's my rave.
That's it?
That's it.
What's your mark?
Well, I, I'll just follow right up for that. My rave is that it's spring, it's mid-May, the dogwoods are blooming, and what that all means is time for town meeting. And appreciate that it's such a pure form of democracy, that there's the opportunity for oratorial flourishes along the way. Most importantly, though, it's a chance to influence the direction of town short term and long term, and just reminding people well worth taking the night off and coming.
Yeah, that would be mine too, is town meeting. It's, it's so important to the functioning of the town. And it really, it's, it's, I like it. It's a good time, too.
It is.
It is entertaining, and Barry does a great job. There's been a huge amount of work that has gone into this warrant that was mailed to everybody from so many different boards and committees, and put together so nicely by our financial team of Liz. And hopefully, people come to town meeting and share your, your voice on, you know, the, the issues that we'll be voting on and, and help us move forward as a town. So, that's it.